Gracias a todos por estar hoy aquí. Si alguien quiere hablar, tiene que ser miembro de la Asociación de Personas Negras. Si no me dices tu nombre y quieres hablar, por favor, déjame saber para que pueda añadirte a la lista. Así que tenemos una agenda que vamos a seguir hoy. Primero, quiero agradecer a la escuela por darnos el auditorio y a la iglesia por grabar este live también y permitirnos usar la iglesia. Gracias a todos los que están aquí, que muestran que te importan y que están aquí, que quieren que la ciudad escuche lo que tienes que hablar. Gracias a los funcionarios de la ciudad. Siempre es personal para mí, tengo que decir eso. Que tenemos la mejor ciudad en California, tal vez en la nación también. Todos los funcionarios electos están aquí porque quieren escuchar lo que tienes que decir. Están aquí porque aman Fresno y están aquí porque quieren cambiar. Si no quieres cambiar, si pueden hacerlo, va a pasar. Pero después de escucharlos directamente, ellos no pueden escucharme, tiene que ser de ustedes. Escuchan a mí todos los días y nunca se despiden de teléfono conmigo. Así que voy a decir una cosa más. Nuestra expectativa es muy alta. Hablé con el alcalde sobre esto cuando estaba en su oficina. Nuestra expectativa es muy alta, necesitamos esto. Pero la realidad es que así es como puede hacer la ciudad. Y eso es lo que el alcalde me dijo antes. Así que vamos a tratar de empujarlo y acercarlo un poco. Algunos datos. California tiene el 50% de las personas sin hogar en la nación. Están aquí en California. Si miras Los Ángeles, tienen alrededor de 75,000 personas sin hogar. Si miras San Francisco, el 40% de los negocios están cerrados permanentemente debido a ese problema. Así que cuando comparamos lo que tenemos con otras ciudades, decimos, ¡wow!, estamos haciendo muy bien. Pero como residentes de Fresno, no es suficiente para nosotros, vamos a pedir más. Y es por eso que todos están aquí. Así que empecemos con el alcalde, si quieres decir un par de palabras antes.
Bueno, permítame levantarme, ya que hay una buena multitud aquí. Y permítame empezar diciendo gracias, A.J., por... Tú eres uno de los únicos organizadores de comunidad questrictamente voluntarios, sin pago, que es capaz de reunir un grupo como este durante el día. Así que es un crédito a ti y quiero decir gracias. Y luego, en segundo lugar, gracias a todos los que decidieron o hicieron un compromiso de venir hoy. Sé que tuviste que dejar tu lugar de negocio o de trabajo, o lo que sea, solo para estar aquí. Así que también queremos decir gracias por eso. Y solo unos pocos comentarios. Realmente estamos aquí para escuchar. Escuchar las preocupaciones de los comerciantes de Blackstone, escuchar las preocupaciones de los vecinos y poder escuchar tus pensamientos sobre, ya sabes, no solo cosas que no están tan bien, pero tal vez cosas que puedes decirnos que crees que están yendo bien. Y entonces podemos, con suerte, darle una respuesta. Y, ya sabes, te diré que mis prioridades desde el成为 alcalde realmente no han cambiado mucho. Todavía, la seguridad pública es fundamental para, creo, todo lo que hacemos. Y tenemos un gran departamento de policía y gracias al consejo hemos estado añadiendo oficiales de policía. De hecho, seremos uno de los pocos agencias de la policía en la nación para estar completamente equipados al final de este año. Y eso será más de 900 oficiales. Pero no solo los oficiales, sino cómo están siendo usados, en bicicletas, en los vecinos, asegurándose de que están haciendo algunas cosas que son importantes para todos ustedes. Has oído recientemente acerca de un préstamo que recibimos del estado de California que nos permitirá que nuestros 25 oficiales se enfocen en esas cosas que están cerca de ustedes. La robo de autos, robo de catalíticos, que continúan plagando nuestras comunidades, así como el robo de venta que está ocurriendo en muchos de tus negocios y tiendas que a menudo escuchas, "No hay mucho que podemos hacer sobre ello". Bueno, hay. Y somos, y estoy seguro de que nuestro jefe de policía puede hablar de eso. La ausencia de hogar y la población sin refugio, conseguir a esos gente alojada siempre va a ser una prioridad para nosotros en la ciudad. Y es cómo hacemos eso, de una manera muy comprometida, dedicada y compasiva. De hecho, acabo de dejar la casa de Pavarolo, así como el parque, mirando algunas de las cosas que estamos haciendo allí. Pero el hecho de que hemos sido capaces de alojar a más de 2,100 personas sin refugio en los últimos dos años y medio es notable. De hecho, fuimos la única gran ciudad en el estado de California que ha reducido la población sin hogar este último año. Dicho esto, todavía tenemos mucho trabajo que hacer. Tenemos muchas personas allá afuera, que están allí en nuestras calles, que necesitan refugio y necesitan ayuda. Y no voy a entrar en todos los otros detalles, pero creo que sabes que Blackstone es muy importante para nosotros. Es uno de nuestros corredores de desarrollo orientado a la transición, lo que significa que ahí es donde estamos enfocando muchos de nuestros esfuerzos en la vivienda y esfuerzos en la revitalización. Y sabes que tenemos un desarrollo que fue completado en Blackstone y McKinley para vivienda. Si miras allí, Blackstone y McKinley también, o más cerca de Clinton, una nueva estructura de parques para la ciudad college, un nuevo centro de desarrollo infantil, un nuevo edificio de ciencia para la ciudad college. Blackstone y Clinton es otro desarrollo de vivienda, Blackstone y Simpson, otro desarrollo de vivienda. Ambos serán completos este año. Y luego en Manchester Center, están convirtiendo el piso superior y las ubicaciones hacia atrás para vivienda a la tasa de mercado y habrá más de 620 unidades en esa ubicación. Así que tratando de dedicar más y más y más vivienda en Blackstone para apoyar a los negocios aquí y hacerlo más de un vecindario sostenible, caminable también. Así que, algo de mi introducción, y gracias a todo el equipo por estar aquí. El consejo, el abogado de la ciudad, nuestro jefe de policía y su equipo, y nuestro director de desarrollo económico Lance Slipincott, quien obviamente es muy estratégico en términos de mejora de nuestra economía aquí local. Así que con eso, volveré a ti, A.J. Gracias.
Tyler, ¿quieres decir un par de palabras? Todo el mundo dice una par de palabras antes de empezar.
Gracias, A.J. Buenas tardes a todos. Soy presidente del consejo, Tyler Maxwell. También quiero extender mi gratitud a A.J. y a todos por tomarse el tiempo de estar aquí hoy. Sé que esto es extremadamente importante para todos ustedes. De lo contrario, no habrían tomado el tiempo de estar aquí. Es extremadamente importante para todos nosotros. A.J. dijo algo anteriormente que pensé que valdría la pena mencionar nuevamente. Sabes, el gobierno podría hacer mucho para ayudar a muchas personas. Hay algunas cosas que no somos capaces de hacer y realmente dependemos de la comunidad que se reúne y nos dice cuáles son algunos de los romperos que necesitan llenar. Tal vez hay algunos puntos que estamos olvidando, tal vez hay algunas cosas que podríamos hacer mejor. Tal vez hay algunas cosas que el gobierno local simplemente no puede hacer. Y así, reunirse como esta comunidad, el gobierno local, siento muy optimista de que podremos abordar muchas de las preocupaciones. En el lado del consejo municipal, estamos un poco diferentes del alcalde, ¿verdad? Él es el que hace todo, ya sabes, él es el ramo ejecutivo. Pero en el ramo legislativo, estamos responsables de pasar políticas. Cualquier legislación, cualquier política que se pasa en la ciudad de Fresno necesita ir al consejo municipal. Lo segundo es el dinero. Cada año el consejo municipal es responsable de adoptar el presupuesto anual. Este año pasado tuvimos un presupuesto de 1,85 billón de dólares. Esa es la función del consejo municipal, asegurarnos de que estamos gastando esos dólares wisely. Y así, trabajando con el alcalde, fuimos capaces de abordar muchas de las preocupaciones que tenemos en nuestra ciudad. Has oído hablar de este préstamo que recientemente recibimos para abordar robo de automóvil, robo de catalíticos. Eso va hacia los 25 oficiales de policía dedicados aquí en nuestra ciudad. Estoy seguro de que nuestro jefe hablará de eso aquí en breve. Focados en solo esos tres crímenes. Y estoy seguro, si estás aquí, probablemente hayas tenido experiencia con uno de esos crímenes ya sea en tu negocio o cerca de tu negocio. Normalmente tenemos que llevar a los oficiales de policía de fuera de otros incidentes realmente críticos, ya sea un homicidio, un asalto o una violación. Y eso puede ser difícil de hacer, sacarlos de fuera de esos crímenes para enfocar en robo de automóviles o robo de catalíticos. Con estos 25 oficiales, no tendremos que preocuparnos por eso. Están 100% dedicados a enfocar en esos crímenes que estoy seguro de que estás cansado y frustrado con. Quiero mencionar antes de pasar el micrófono uno otro proyecto que el alcalde no había mencionado. Ese va a estar en el lado norte izquierdo de Blackstone y Ashland. Otro enorme inversión que estamos haciendo es un centro de servicio de la ciudad. Va a ser más de 30,000 metros cuadrados. Va a incluir alrededor de 100 unidades de vivienda de servicio de la ciudad y creo que traerá una base de clientes a Blackstone, no solo a los que viven allí, sino a los que viajan todos los días para usar ese centro de actividades. Van a querer explorar, van a querer comprar, van a querer comer, ir a Manchester Mall. Así que eso va a ser un par de años antes de que eso esté funcionando. Pero estoy optimista con todos estos desarrollos que el alcalde ha estado trabajando muy duro, así como el consejo, de que vamos a traer una mayor base de clientes a tus negocios y a tu futuro. Así que gracias a todos por vernos. Appreciate el tiempo y aprecio que estés aquí. Gracias.
Buenas tardes a todos. Soy Annalisa Pereira, soy vicepresidenta del consejo. Así que represento el distrito 1, que es el distrito Tower, al norte, hasta Shaw. Y luego mi frontera occidental son los límites de la ciudad, todo el lado oeste. Y luego es más o menos la ciudad college Maroa, en el lado este. Pero estoy muy emocionada de estar aquí hoy y compartir más sobre increíbles cosas que estamos haciendo desde una perspectiva de la ciudad relacionadas con las mejoras de la pared, relacionadas con los puentes de vendedores, relacionadas con la aplicación de código de horas. Por primera vez en la historia de nuestra ciudad, ahora tenemos aplicación de código de horas. Así que después de las cinco de la noche, fines de semana, nuestros problemas no paran a las cinco de la noche y a veces simplemente empiezan a subir. Y así, ahora, por primera vez en la historia de nuestra ciudad, tenemos un equipo, del que nuestro abogado de la ciudad podría hablar un poco más también, solamente dedicado a abordar muchas de las cuestiones que todos ustedes enfrentarán después de horas relacionadas con la aplicación de código. Así que no soy tan largueta como mis colegas, pero nuevamente, estoy muy feliz de estar aquí, muy feliz de compartir más y especialmente apreciado por la oportunidad de aprender de ustedes. Así que gracias por invitarme.
Buenas tardes a todos. Soy membro del consejo Nelson Asparza, represento el distrito número 7. Ya sabes, puedo darte las fronteras enteras, pero el volumen del corredor central y sur de Blackstone se encuentra dentro de mi distrito, dependiendo de qué lado de la calle estés, si estás a sur de Dakota o al norte de Visadero. La mayoría de los corredores de Blackstone están dentro de mi distrito. Durante los años hemos hecho un gran trabajo en términos de políticas y sorteo de semillas. Podemos ver que crece en Blackstone durante los años. Muchos de ustedes son parte de eso. Appreciamos a todos ustedes estar aquí esta tarde para compartir con nosotros algunas de esas cuestiones y preocupaciones. Nuestra línea de oficina siempre está abierta, como son mis colegas y los alcalde. Pero es genial venir aquí juntos, todos en una habitación, poder discutir y sacar ideas entre sí. También queremos apreciar su presencia.
Buenas tardes a todos. Soy Andrew Jones, el abogado de la ciudad. Estoy aquí solo para escuchar. Mi propósito en estar aquí es que mi oficina oversee la aplicación de código. Así que cualquier cuestión relacionada con el código, estoy muy abierto a escucharla. Solo quería decir gracias al consejo municipal y al alcalde por ser muy apoyadores en términos de aplicación de código y proporcionar el financiamiento que necesitamos. El membro del consejo Pereira mencionó el hecho de que tenemos un equipo de código nocturno. Y así espero que todos ustedes, si tienen cuestiones por la noche, aprovechen eso y podemos hablar un poco más sobre eso. También, en términos de código, solo quería reconocer a Richard Salinas, quien es nuestra persona dedicada a este corredor y su trabajo con A.J. Muchas gracias.
Buenas tardes, Paco Baldra. Soy jefe de policía. Y aquí conmigo hoy tengo al diputado Mike Landon y el capitán Jennifer Horford. D.C. Landon es el jefe de patrulla, así que él es sobre todos los cinco distritos de policiación, incluyendo el distrito policial central, que es muy importante para nosotros. Hay muchos negocios, muchas escuelas, muchos lugares importantes en ese distrito en particular. Y como dijo nuestro abogado de la ciudad, realmente estamos aquí para escuchar, para ver cuáles son tus preocupaciones. Tenemos mucha información, pero prefiero enfocarme en cualquier pregunta que puedas tener. Hemos tenido mucho éxito en los últimos dos años en disminuir el crimen violento y añadir oficiales de policía a la fuerza. Pero ahora podemos realmente enfocarnos en algunas de esas otras cosas que realmente afectan a la comunidad empresarial, como el robo de venta, algunos de los desastres y vandalismos en nuestros vecinos. Así que realmente queremos escuchar vuestras ideas, vuestras preocupaciones, para que podamos ser proactivos sobre estas cosas. Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lance Slipincott. Estoy con el departamento de desarrollo económico de la ciudad. Perdón. Cualquier cosa que sea de pequeño negocio o de orientación a negocios es algo que nos encargamos. Sé que he tenido muchos contactos con gente en esta sala. Si hay algo que podamos hacer o no puedes hacer una pregunta hoy, tenemos a John Lawrence, que está con nuestro departamento. John, levanta la mano. Vosotros dais sus contactos y información. Estamos contentos de asistir de cualquier forma que podamos. Gracias.
Y por cierto, a todos los que tienen un negocio hoy, asegúrate de hablar con Lance antes de partir. Puedes mantenerlo hasta las cinco de la noche. Y él estará feliz de hacerlo, por cierto. Es la mejor persona para conseguir este trabajo en la ciudad. Gracias, alcalde. Quiero reconocer a más gente aquí. ¿Está Lisa Olivera aquí? ¿La ha atendido? Lisa, ¿por qué no decir quién eres? ¿Quién eres? Bueno, ella es la CEO y presidente del bureau de visitantes en el condado de Fresno. Así que si quieres hacer algún evento o algo, ella está aquí por esa razón. Y también quiero reconocer a Roger... Roger Bonactar, es un amigo mío aquí. Está corriendo por el distrito 6 como membro del consejo. Es un abogado. Y gracias por estar aquí hoy. ¿Alguien más aquí que no vi y no reconocí? Así que quiero decir, la Asociación de Personas Negras comenzó en 2016 y gracias al alcalde comenzó. Y luego, realmente, si no fuera por Nelson, no tendríamos el poder que tenemos hoy al tener a Richard Salinas, el aplicador de código, como proyecto especial en Blackstone. Así que Richard y yo trabajamos mano a mano. Y en realidad, lo escucho mucho porque quiero hacer todo según las reglas de la ciudad. Así que él me guía en lo que es lo correcto de hacer. Así que hacemos eso todo el tiempo. Y gracias al abogado de la ciudad Jones por apoyar al aplicador de código también. Porque realmente, sin el aplicador de código, para nosotros es una arma secreta que la Asociación de Personas Negras y el aplicador de código trabajan mano a mano. Así que la Asociación de Personas Negras, vamos de Gettysburg hasta Visadero, por cierto. Así que tenemos vendedores de autos, tenemos estaciones de gas, operadores de hoteles. La Asociación de Personas Negras, que Jackie no pudo llegar hoy, se enfermó esta mañana. Tenemos vendedores móviles, tenemos escuelas, los residentes, la feria de antiguos, los vendedores de teléfono y la industria del entretenimiento, toda la parte de esta asociación. Así que tenemos alrededor de 350 comerciantes, pero realmente representamos alrededor de 3,000 miembros. Creo que tenemos la mayor asociación en Fresno y somos muy activos. Y antes de empezar, muchos miembros me preguntan si puedo hablar en su nombre y hacer preguntas. Así que voy a estar haciendo preguntas difíciles. Y siempre digo que no soy político correcto. Digo lo que tengo que decir. No puedo ser despedido porque soy un voluntario. Y cuando hablo, hablo en nombre de en realidad 3,000 personas. Pero la ciudad tiene mi apoyo 100%. Bien, lo primero es que queremos hablar del árbol en Griffith. Así que no sé si la ciudad sabe. Teníamos el árbol en la oficina de correo que teníamos, una señora, su cabeza fue desaparecida allí. Muchos miembros de las gangas y vendedores de drogas y prostitutas estaban bajo él. Así que hablé con el congresista Jim Costa y dije que necesito cortar este árbol. Él respondió, dijo que la oficina de correo no tenía dinero. Dije que nuestros miembros lo tomarían. Y dentro de 48 horas me dio la permiso y dentro de siete días lo habíamos ido. Así que después de esto, tenemos otro problema. Que hay tres árboles en la ciudad, así que voy a mostrar algunas imágenes. Así es como se ve el árbol. Cada vez que tomas una foto ves a la gente caminando bajo él. Y esta es la señora que su cabeza fue desaparecida bajo ese árbol y eso es por lo que lo retiramos. Y después de retirarlo, creo que el tipo que cortó el árbol estaba sentado sobre él. Así que ahora nadie está bajo ese árbol porque no hay sombra. Pero el problema que tenemos... El problema que tenemos es que en lugar de estar bajo ese árbol, ahora están bajo los árboles y vemos la propiedad frente a Cars Jr. y los dos frente a la oficina de correo. Y cada vez que vas vas a ver gente como esta. Hay muchos prostitutas, miembros de las gangas, vendedores de drogas. Y en realidad, este tipo está sentado ahí bebiendo té. Y lo que pasó es que en... ¿Cómo se llama? centro de compras de enfermería, tenemos vendedores de drogas que están allí y la gente viene a ellos todo el tiempo. Así que mi solicitud de la ciudad es que necesitamos que esos árboles sean cortados para eliminar cualquier sombra.
Sí. Gracias, A.J., por traer eso. Y sé que lo hemos discutido en el pasado. Creo que está en mi distrito, ahí al lado de Griffith. Nuestro equipo está consciente de eso. Sabemos que a menudo la gente buscará el refugio de sombra debajo de uno de nuestros muchos árboles. Y a veces atrae a las personas equivocadas que hacen actividades ilícitas en la sombra. Y así, tenemos una política de la ciudad donde no vamos a simplemente retirar un árbol a menos que esté muerto o decayendo. Tenemos la capacidad de cortar esos árboles, así que ofrece menos sombra. Sabes, lo último que queremos hacer es retirar todos los árboles en Blackstone. Definitivamente hay gente, los he visto a mí mismo, conduciendo por Blackstone, bebiendo en la sombra de los árboles o haciendo algo que no deberían estar haciendo. Pero al mismo tiempo, creo que todos estamos muy esperanzados y optimistas aquí de que en los próximos años que verán algunas transformaciones importantes en Blackstone con más oficiales de policía dedicados, más inversión en nuestros negocios y unidades residenciales adicionales. No creo que quisiéramos llegar a ese punto y luego no tener ningún árbol en Blackstone para los propietarios o tus patrón para usar en ese momento. Así que lo que podemos hacer y lo que estamos haciendo con mi oficina actualmente, A.J., es que estamos trabajando con Public Works para ver si podemos cortarlos sin retirarlos. Así que no proporcionan tanto sombra a las personas que mostraste en las fotografías antes.
Sí, así que especialmente este árbol que tengo arriba. Este es el que está frente a Cars Jr. Y aquí es donde todo el mundo está sentado. Cada vez que vas vas a ver a alguien sentado allí. Así que esto tiene que ser cortado hasta que podamos eliminar la sombra. Así que lo hicimos en Pep Boys, lo hicimos en Grocery Outlet, lo hicimos en Taco Bell. Y una vez que cortamos todos los árboles, no retiramos ningún árbol. Y este, sé que al principio pidió que lo retirara completamente porque es realmente inútil. Tienes muchas prostitutas que están bajo él también y está justo en Blackstone. Pero estamos felices si lo cortamos todo para que nadie pueda sentarse bajo él.
Sí, oigo que lo escuchas claro y estamos trabajando en ello ahora mismo, A.J. Gracias.
Voy a llamar desde Aspen School, Lisa Taylor y Matt Flores. Creo que eres la primera gente a hablar sobre los problemas que tienes aquí. Ese es el siguiente tema.
Hola, gracias por esta oportunidad. Mi nombre es Lisa Taylor. Soy la directora de la escuela aquí en Aspen Meadow. He estado en educación aquí en Fresno durante más de 25 años. Estudié para el Distrito Unified de la Escuela de Fresno, escuelas privadas. Y luego terminé en el mundo de las escuelas charteras hace aproximadamente 16 años. Comencé a enseñar en nuestra primera escuela, Aspen Valley, que se celebrará su 20º año este año. Es una escuela chartera pública que está autorizada bajo el Distrito Unified de la Escuela de Fresno. Y en 2016, dejé el classroom para venir y comenzar esta escuela con 54 estudiantes, TK hasta el segundo grado, y ahora sirvimos a casi 300, TK hasta el sexto grado. Realmente, no podríamos haberlo hecho sin la asociación que teníamos con la aplicación de código de la ciudad, con el departamento de policía, trayendo a los vecinos fractos de vida que es una colaboración entre el Departamento de Policía de Fresno, las iglesias y los vendedores en las áreas en la ciudad. Y así fue realmente una gran experiencia. Hemos notado a través del tiempo las cosas mejorando. Nuestra misión es transformar la comunidad al desarrollar líderes excepcionales. Y así, teníamos un objetivo de ayudar a traer transformación. Cuando llegamos a esta escuela, había mucha violencia de las gangas. En los primeros meses de la escuela teníamos varios cierres. Teníamos algunos disparos. Teníamos uno en el cuarto, aquí en Del Mar y en Blackstone. Teníamos disparos por la calle. Teníamos niños corriendo, un par de niños de Fort Miller corriendo con balas por la calle. Afortunadamente, los oficiales cercanos aquí pudieron ayudarnos. Y también tenemos nuestros oficiales de recursos escolares que están aquí también desde las 6:00 de la mañana hasta las 7:00 de la noche. Pero tuvimos que enseñar a nuestros hijos cómo hacer cierres, cómo poder dejar las áreas donde jugaban para poder entrar al classroom. Y estoy feliz de decir que a través de los últimos años las cosas han mejorado, han mejorado. Excepto muy recientemente, hacia el final del último año escolar, comenzaron a tener algunos juveniles de la área que comenzaron a tener peleas aquí en nuestro campus, justo aquí en Lansing. Hemos tenido este año más subidas con amenazas de algunos de esos estudiantes. Van en grupos de como siete, ocho niños a veces. Un de nuestros estudiantes fue disparado con un arma de órbita un día y simplemente amenazándolos. Y así hemos estado trabajando con el departamento de policía, dejando a todos saber que esto ha estado pasando. Hemos tenido algunos padres a lo largo del camino. No creo que fueran nuestros padres, pero trataron de involucrarse para detenerlo. Así que estamos trabajando en eso ahora mismo, enseñando a nuestros estudiantes no interactuar con personas que están en el vecindario como eso. Así que estamos haciendo nuestra parte. Así que eso es una especie de algunas de las preocupaciones. Una de las buenas cosas que estamos esperando es que el patio por el lado de la calle solía ser un jardín de comunidad dirigido por Fresno First Baptist. Y ahora que hemos comprado la propiedad, nos gustaría comenzar el jardín de comunidad de vuelta. Y tenemos un equipo ahora mismo de gente que está trabajando en eso, padres. Y estamos colaborando con las organizaciones para comenzar eso de vuelta. Y nos gustaría poder traer transformación a la comunidad a través de eso. Will involucrar a nuestros estudiantes, familias, nuestros vendedores vecinales. Ahora mismo, hemos estado hablando con verdaderos productos orgánicos para colaborar con nosotros. Nosotros hablaremos con la aplicación de código de la ciudad. Realmente queremos que sea algo que esté prosperando para este vecindario. Y en realidad queremos incluir a los sin hogar de cualquier forma que podamos. Esta escuela tiene el 22% de sus estudiantes que son sin hogar. Y así queremos asegurarnos de que estamos haciendo nuestra parte para hacer que este sea un verdadero jardín de comunidad con nuestros residentes vecinales y con nuestra población sin hogar también. Gracias.
Gracias, Lisa. Mi nombre es Matt Flores. Soy el jefe de operaciones para las escuelas públicas de Aspen. Comencé hace unos dos años, pero comencé con la organización en 2013 como auxiliar de maestros. Y fui a la operación por un par de años en Wonder Valley. Pero regresé y ahora estoy en cargo de todas las operaciones y haciendo seguro y ayudando a nuestros grandes líderes de la escuela y a todos los demás que forman parte de la organización para hacerlo mejor para nuestra comunidad y para nuestros estudiantes. Un par de cosas que he notado desde que he regresado es que... Han habido muchas cosas buenas que han pasado y que han sido limpiadas. Recientemente, esta casa aquí detrás de nosotros, en Glen, era una enorme casa de ganga con algunas prostitutas saliendo de ella. Creo que hay algunas imágenes que podemos mostrar. Y esto está directamente detrás de donde está nuestro parque. Y habría gente entrando y saliendo y finalmente se limpió. Pero ahora todavía estamos viendo a algunos sin hogar que siguen entrando y saliendo de la casa. Creo que hubo un disparo hace poco que involucraba esa casa también. Pero también, hay... Puede que no sepa si esto es verdad o no, pero esto es lo que estoy escuchando, que algunos de los hoteles están siendo cambiados en una vivienda sin hogar, lo que me preocupa porque no hay un ley que establece que tiene que estar a 1,000 metros de las escuelas. Y hay un hotel que está justo por el lado de la calle aquí. Y es un gran preocupación para nuestra si eso realmente va a pasar. Y uno de mis otros preocupaciones, que puede no ser una gran preocupación para muchos, pero para mí, son los contratos con nuestra compañía de basura, nuestro manejo de basuras. No se nos permite ir a ninguna otra basura, pero tengo que llamar a las empresas cada semana porque no están llegando a recoger nuestra basura y se está volviendo un peligro para nuestra comunidad. Porque la basura está creciendo y se está volviendo un problema. No puedo encontrar a nadie más para llegar a o para contratar con porque solo se me permite hacer eso con una empresa. No sé si otros negocios tienen ese problema con sus compañías de basura y no siendo recogidos. Pero es un problema bastante grande aquí. Teníamos un basurero donde alguien quemó nuestro basurero dos semanas atrás. Y fue un gran desastre. Llevó a la compañía una semana y media para salir y arreglar el problema y darnos el nuevo basurero. Sí, gracias.
Quiero agregar, cualquier... Así que la forma en que funciona la ciudad, la ciudad de Fresno recoge basura residencial a través de toda la ciudad, obviamente. Pero en el lado comercial, hay dos diferentes vendedores. Y el vendedor aquí, como recuerdo, es Republic. Y así, hemos tenido algunas preocupaciones expresadas a nosotros sobre, ya sabes, que no recogen de la manera en que deberíamos. Así que en realidad estamos en conversaciones con ellos ahora. Y con suerte eso se resolverá.
Gracias. ¿El dueño de la casa en Glen y Lansing aquí en el corner? ¿Puedes subir? ¿Quién dijo que es mi tío? Esta casa en la que estoy mostrando la imagen? Ah, está bien.
Hola, mi nombre es Regina. Mi tío vivía allí y lo llamo mi tío. Ha sido mi mantenimiento desde antes de que tuviera hijos. Es un buen hombre y la información que tienen es totalmente incorrecta. He's a good man, and the information they have is totally wrong. He has cancer, he recently had a rupture in his lungs, went to the hospital, came back to his house burnt. He is now currently homeless. So like, he got $300 from the Red Cross, and now he's out here in the streets. He has open wound from his surgery. What, like, what kind of help is there out there for him? You know, what happened to his house after, we have no control over, we don't know what it's about. But, you know, to hear the way it was said about his house is kind of like, it makes me a little upset, you know, because that's not what it was. My friend was killed right here. I have a couple of people out here that have lost their lives. You know, I've been out here homeless for five years. I have four young children. Where are the opportunities for somebody like me? You guys give us no information out here. So we don't know where to go, we don't know what to do. A lot of the people out here don't want to come and speak up because they're afraid of losing their children. I'm not afraid to speak up because I want more for my kids. I have went to the police plenty of times to ask them for some type of activities for my children, you know, because I don't want to lose my children to the streets. I don't want my kids out here like this. I want my children's time taken up, you know? And you guys have no type of opportunities out here for them. Like, where's the PAL League out here? You have one in Clovis, but not here, you know? I don't know where to go for anything. Yeah, okay. Yes, I am currently homeless. Yes, yes. We just got out of the community housing for the county, but we don't know where to go now. We have no money right now, so if there's any type of help, you know, we would gladly accept the information. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go actually over this house. I was asking for the landlord to be here, we did talk to them. But this is how the house looked from the backyard, if you look at the end, the blue, there was prostitution happening right there. So we talked to the owner, when I say we, I take a lot of credit for the code enforcer, this is how the house looked from inside at the backyard. So we did talk to them. This is the school, Aspen School, right next to the, I mean, next door, where all the prostitution, gangs, and drug dealing happened right there. And that's, I think, what Aspen was talking about. We did talk to the landlord, and they have people cleaning the backyard, and they're doing some repair on the house, and thanks to the code enforcer. What's the name of the code enforcer in charge? We were there, but there's another code enforcer. Garrett, okay. So now we, so the concern is from the school is, how can we have all these homeless and drug dealers and pimp next to the school? It's not 1,000 yards away, it's right next to the school, I mean, less than 100 yards. So that's a big issue. That's why for us, Lansing and Glen has to be cleaned all the time, there's no exception about it. So this is on Glen, on Aspen, is it, on Lansing? Got confused with Lansing and Glen. So we had people sitting there for, Richard and I saw them, they were there for many months, and they said, Pavarolo House never came to pick them up, they came and checked on, and they came. So I did call Pavarolo House. And let me say, we were working really good with Pavarolo, so we had a lot of issues, we're gonna talk about it in a few seconds. But those two people were out for many, many months. So I did call Pavarolo House, and I know it's not showing the whole picture there, but basically I said, I said, hey, you need to pick up these people, and I got a response saying, they have to be consistent, so we need to see them interviewed so many times. And then I said, you cannot say, but I'm gonna read it. I said, that's not, that's in the past. So the question that, the answer was, that we need to interview them so many times before we can house them. So then I responded, that's in the past, I have an agreement with the mayor that anybody on Blackstone is gonna be housed immediately, so please get somebody to house them. And I would say within 24 hours, for eight hours, Lansing was clean. But basically, this is the question, so we need to make it official. Blackstone has a priority, Blackstone has to have a team on the ground, housing anybody on Blackstone first.
Yeah, thank, thank you, AJ. So let me, on a citywide perspective, you know, because homeless isn't restricted to Blackstone or downtown or anywhere else, we have homeless population in every district within the city. We set forth to purchase motels on Parkway, and that, we purchased five of them as a city. We partnered with a housing authority to purchase four, so nine of those were for the purpose of emergency shelter. And we partner with the Pavarolo House, Turning Point, and RH Community Builders for the purpose of providing services at those particular locations, food, counseling services, et cetera. Those shelters are not intended to be long-term. And so the plan is to, once those folks get on their feet, to be able to transition them out to other permanent housing. I can tell you our initial, what we call Project Off-Ramp, we had over 650 people on the freeways, put those into emergency shelter, 82% of them. Some of them went their own way because we had no ability to force people into shelter, I think you can appreciate that. But I will tell you that 76% of those who accepted shelter and services on Parkway transitioned into permanent housing and/or back with family. The challenge we're facing today is many of the folks that are out there on the streets are more chronic homeless, and they are, also have, in many cases, a higher acuity level of mental health. And so they're not in a position or mindset to be able to accept shelter. So we cannot force them yet. You know, there's no law that allows for that. And so the other part of it is for Blackstone. We also purchased, and by the way, all of those motels on, or hotels on Blackstone or on Parkway are going to be converted at some point into permanent housing. One of them already is Promesa Commons, and that one is in construction phase now. We have since purchased the Clarion, and also the Travelodge, we're in the process of taking ownership of that. The Travelodge is going to be for affordable housing, as well as the Clarion Point is used, about half of the rooms are for what's called transitional housing, meaning that people that are, have transitioned out of shelter perhaps, they're ready to move into a permanent location, but they have a voucher, but there's no location ready. And so that's kind of a transitional housing. The other ones are for shelter. And so the challenge for us is on Blackstone, is do you take people on Blackstone and put them into the Clarion, which was my initial goal, which then becomes maybe they start attracting their friends around and on the outside of it? Or do we simply house those folks over on Parkway at another location? And that's the avenue that we're taking right now. But yes, AJ, it is a priority. My team knows it, Phil Skye knows it, because the truth is, we worked out a coordinated deal to where we would purchase the Clarion for shelter and transitional housing, and in return, that we did not want that to become a nuisance for the entire area. And so we are making that a priority. I will say, at the beginning, there was some miscommunication. That communication has been addressed, and it is a priority. They may not be housed at the Clarion, but they'll be housed.
Thank you. Yes. Can you come over here, please?
Where's Phil Seater?
Just say your name.
And Phil Skye, I know you're here. Okay, so at any point, if you want to come up and, you know, share some thoughts on the homeless, well, it'd be appreciated.
Hi, my name is Holly Bundy, my husband and I own the property sort of by where we're talking right now on Dakota, Glen, and Lansing. And it's right behind the granite and marble shop. And we've had homeless in tents behind, in front of our house, and of course, they're along the streets and all of that. But we have many questions and concerns, and first of all, it's nice to meet you, AJ. You're a magnificent person, I just have to hand it to you for all that you've done. I would not have known about this meeting had it not been for you.
Couldn't you mention how you called me?
Okay, well, one day I kind of got a bee in my bonnet, and I was mad. So I went over to the carpet shop, on Blackstone, Remnants, the Remnants shop. And I went in to see a friend of mine, and he wasn't there. So I went over to the granite shop because they had helped me before. And I said, I need to know the person to call so I can complain. And that's, she, the gal at the granite shop gave me AJ's phone number, that's how I found out about this. So you're no longer a mystery man. We are concerned about, I guess it's called the Crossroads? It's not the Crossroads anymore.
The Crossroads is a facility that was, you want to talk about Nelson, because it was not a city facility?
Yeah, so the, I'm still calling it Crossroads at this point, it's still owned by the same folks. Crossroads is a result of a state program called Project Home Key, where the state would provide dollars to convert, during COVID, it started during COVID, the state would provide dollars to convert motels into homeless shelter rooms. The county of Fresno, not the city, the county of Fresno applied for those dollars, partnered with a private developer, and that has all been a county project, albeit within the city. But that is a county-run, operated project. The county, well, the county slash the private developer. At this point, I believe just the private developer owns it, but it's, the program is sanctioned by the county, and the funds were subsidized by the county through the state. So it is a private developer that owns that, and that is now transitioning it to permanent affordable housing.
Just like the other person mentioned, it's right near a school, so that's another issue that we have, because it's, should be farther away, I guess, than right next to a school. Anyway, that was one of our particular concerns, and, let's see, I, well, I have a lot of things to say, but that was really, my main concern is that, that who owns the crossroads and how will that affect and impact our property? Because the property values are going down with all of the homeless issues, of course.
Yeah, well, what you're seeing now is the Crossroads property is vacant, and part of the strings that are attached to that state program is that it would remain sort of emergency shelter for a couple of years. Those couple of years are now up, and they're now required to, the developer's now required to invest in that property and turn it into permanent affordable housing. So it won't no longer be, won't any longer be sort of homeless housing or shelter, there will be permanent affordable housing units once they are done being invested in and converted. So that's the next stage of this Project Home Keys, there'll be permanent apartments.
Before I ask my husband if he has something to address, I would like to share what Paul Cordistani said. He's a neighbor of ours, he owns many of the duplexes on Dakota, and this, he is not able to be here today, so I asked for permission to give, to read this to you, and this is what he says. "The so-called smuggler's plan seems to run contrary to any gentrification plan that the city may hope to have in that part of Blackstone, all the way to the Tower District and City College, unless, of course, the city plans to perpetually commit additional police presence and at least, to at least protect the junior high kids at Fort Miller." So I'll give you this stuff, so you can look at it later, you want to say something?
Yeah, I have some real concerns. Many years ago, when I moved to Fresno, I bought a home downtown, just north of the hospital on Clark. At that time, there were lots of, there were lots of homeowners, and because of the drugs, they eventually left. And I went to several meetings, not as big as this, but meetings where I was, where the homeowners in that area were promised that they were, they were going to put a police station here on Belmont, and all these different kinds of things. So I held on that property for 35 years. And I ended up selling it for $20,000 less than what I had paid into it. Now, we own the property right here on Glen and Dakota, on the corner. And with all the homelessness and all the stuff that's going on, it's just really, really difficult to get quality renters, and the value of the property is doing the same thing as happened downtown. So we have some major concerns. Sometimes when I go to the property, which is a rental property, to do yard work and stuff like that, on Lansing, between Glen and Blackstone, I've seen as many as 15 or 20 little camps like what was shown here on Lansing. I have to say that I appreciate, Mayor, what you have done since you became mayor. I have seen more going on with this than I have before, and we appreciate it. But I would really like to have the city, whoever, to address this area prostitutes and everything that's already been talked about, so I'm not going to talk about it anymore. But, yeah, okay, property values is a big thing for me.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. And two things, I'm gonna make sure that the owners of the crossroads, or the ones that are doing that development, that you are able to speak directly to them, and we'll make sure that that happens today, in this room. Okay? And then the second thing, ma'am, on the front row, you spoke up here, someone named Sarah Marhadi will be getting in touch with you, and she happens to be in the building, and she's gonna make arrangements for you as well to help out. Sarah, will you please stand so she knows who? So Sarah will make sure that you get taken care of as well. Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Phil. Brad is.
Is Brad here? Oh, Brad, you don't say anything about, okay, so we have a request that Brad is over here, that we need at Crossroad, we need a masonry wall around. So that's a request, gonna be from everybody over here, I'm putting you on the spot. Okay? You know, we talked about it so many times, because that prevents people dealing through the wall or breaking the fence and going through. But, I mean, Brad, we're always in communication, so like I say, Pavarolo House, HR, whatever it is, it's called Brad Hardey for me, and we all work together, everybody wants to make sure that Blackstone is happy. So do we have some hookups? Yes, we do. But we deal with them directly, and we take care of it. So thank you, Brad, for everything you've done in the past for us too.
It's RH Community Builders, and I will say, they have several properties in Fresno, and the outcome of those properties have been very good. And so I expect that that will be the case with the smugglers too. But I do think it's important you communicate at this point. Thank you.
Is Stephanie here, a resident, it's called Stephanie? Yeah, Stephanie. So she's also on Glen and Lansing.
My name is Stephanie, I live on the corner house here on Glen and Lansing. We have issues of people trespassing our house. We recently had a man trying to open our windows. It's just me and my mom, so it's pretty terrifying for us to see, like, images, because we have cameras, so it's really scary for us to have people parking in the front, there's people trespassing in our garden, there's people just trying to open our windows. Someone recently also tried to open my mom's cars, it's, a lot of, a lot of people go into that house in the corner as well, and this, it's just, you know, it's very terrifying because it's just me and my mom. And I don't know if, if there's going to be like patrolling, or if, you guys can send somebody there to patrol our neighborhood, because it's...
Hi, Stephanie, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. I do, like as I said earlier, I have the captain who oversees this area, so we will make sure to get your contact information, and also your exact address. More than likely, it's gonna be folks that are just wandering in the areas. All of the crimes that we track are down, one of them that is up are vehicle burglaries. So we have seen a little bit of a jump, about a 9% jump of people just going through random neighborhoods and trying cars. So if you leave your cars out in the driveway and it's unlocked, they're gonna check the doors, and if it can't be opened, it will be opened. So we always try to be cautious of that and make the public aware to never leave any value-
to never leave any valuables inside the vehicle. If there's nothing for them to take, then, you know, they, they can't, they can't hurt you in that aspect. But there is a lot of foot traffic in this community. But we will get with you, Stephanie, and we'll get your contact information.
And if I could just add to that real quick too. Stephanie, I think you mentioned that you had some cameras, but I know we have a lot of, uh, residents here that might not have cameras. The city does currently have a rebate program. If you were interested in getting something like a Ring doorbell, sort of security system for your home, where you're able to watch live footage and playback footage strategically placed around your house. We do have a rebate program for that too. If you live north of Dakota, you could email me and get more information. We could walk you through that process. District four, the number four, districtfour@fresno.gov. Thanks.
First, I want to recognize our captain, Captain Horford. She, you've been here a couple of months?
I think I've been here like a month and a half.
So she's our new captain in the area. And really, I think, thank you for chief. You couldn't have chose a better captain to be over here. She hit the ground running. Again, we talked to her, Rich and I talked to her a couple of times. I mean, she listened to what I want and she acted right away. So she's working with the park and you could see more activity, police on the street, uh, from Captain Horford. But so any question you have today after the meeting, please talk to her. She's our captain. Next, we're going to talk about businesses that have concern. Tony, Tony Ochoanero, I know I saw you here somewhere. Tony, ah, over here. And then after Tony, I have June Castillo.
Greetings. I'm a partner in the Walmart Center. It's a family-owned center and we're very popular right now. More popular than we wanted to be. We've experienced such a surge midsummer. The demographics, actually, the, uh, we had a meeting last November. And both the police chief and you mayor attended. And we were approaching the merchants problem. We had a lively group there at that point. There were, there were problems that had surfaced and you were trying, you, we didn't get an answer, but you said this is something, we'll do something about more police. You talked about housing back on McKinley and Clinton. And because we were so aware of what was going on here, the fact that, uh, we brought Pavarolo, I guess, and Parkway in midsummer, brought 100 or 200 residents to this area, which seems so counterintuitive. And the effect has been, for all the small merchants here, each one has their own separate problem, little things that happen to them every day. In the center, we've increased in problems. Walmart has got a, I had it here. Walmart has a, takes inventory and their loss up to September 21st of this year has been $1.8 million. And that's not so uncommon. I mean, they do lose a lot. But when they did the inventory, what struck them is different months, certain things would happen. In midsummer, camping supplies were being taken for, and they assumed, you know, we're, we're getting a run on camping supplies, pads to sleep on, things like that. Recently, there's $200,000 out of the health and beauty, which is, is makeup, uh, also women's clothes. They see a rise in that. When there was a greater population of prostitution going on, they feel it there, they can see it there. And it's the only gauge or metric they have as you look back on it. That doesn't count the loss that's happening right now, every day. There was a contract with Walmart for PD, which is the greatest thing to have that up front. And it helps when people are leaving the building. This was helps the most, having the PD there. When the contract was down for about two months and eight bicycles rode out the front of that store. They get really emboldened. We've had more assaults, more, uh, conflicts with our security, uh, fires started. I've increased my gardener, he's getting there every day to pick up trash now. The security is working, they're overworking almost because the incidents that happen have just increased. I can handle this, we can handle it, we can afford to do it. And it is what it is. As far as theft and loss, it's just gotten greater and greater. With the housing, even though it's not permanent, which I couldn't hear all of this, that this is not a permanent thing. But with the housing and for the families, I think they need it. There should be some kind of answer, but it's a difficult thing to, to deal with. I don't know, it's impossible, it seems like. There are, there's element of, of the bad boys that come with it, the drug people, uh, the assaults. And that's increased amazingly. There's a lot of drug action down on, uh, Fedora in that area there. I think all PD must know about where this is a little coming from. But it filters right down to in front of our store, in the corners, in the bushes, and it's done. And this is what I'm talking about. I don't know how this got to be this way. Did you ever have a review of the impact? And we've already gone through that first meeting, we, what we talked about. What you've done, it seems like, has brought more here. And it's just, uh, it seems absurd and you must have a good reason. But this is not the area to bring them in because they hardly ever leave. They're not, you can't control all of them. They can't, they won't take housing, they say they will. They'd rather mill here and, and stay here. So I don't know what the answer is, but that's what we're experiencing.
Yeah. So let me try to, try, try to address it as best I can. The Clarion is not intended to be long-term shelter. It is intended to be permanent housing and it will be converted into that. The transition period though, when we utilize dollars from the state, is that it begins as shelter and transitions into, uh, affordable housing. We don't have any more hotels on Parkway we can buy. We, there was, there was nine of them there. Uh, there's, there's actually two more not interested in selling. The one that Housing Authority, uh, purchased, it's been a shelter now for two years and it's been taken offline and converted into permanent housing. So our options were, quite frankly, is to look for other hotels in our city where there was an interest in selling and we wanted to convert to more housing. Blackstone is that place for us, for the housing piece. And I, you know, I apologize for any, you know, problems that that's created in terms of attractive nuisance. We have a contract and we pay very good money to the people running the Clarion. And it's my expectation that they will make sure that the problems don't occur. There are certain things they can control, certain things they can't. But, um, it, it is a temporary issue and I, I know that probably doesn't give you much satisfaction. Uh, I can tell you, I'm going to have the police chief talk about what the retail side of things are going to be at Walmart in the future that I think is going to be music to your ears. So it's really a two-part issue, but the, the hotel is going to be converted permanent housing at some point, sooner than later.
Good, I appreciate that.
Yep.
So, so one of the issues that we're really looking at this next year is the fact that we can really focus more on property crimes. Uh, property crimes are definitely an issue in the state of California. Uh, one of the main reasons why it's, it's an issue is because if, if you've noticed or maybe haven't noticed, there's not a whole lot of consequences for petty theft. Simply, it's not, it's not, it's a sight and release type of violation. It's not something that the jail will, will keep somebody for long-term on a petty theft. And that's for a lot of reasons. If we have limited bed spacing at, at the, at the county jail, well, that limited bed spacing is, is set aside for murderers, murderers, rapists, you know, shooters, uh, gang members, violent crimes. So that's, and we do a really good job of solving those crimes and putting those people in those bed spaces. But what we can do is we can be more proactive. Um, thank you for highlighting the, the, uh, the contract law enforcement. Cops do matter. Having a police officer in his vehicle in front of Walmart, it does make a difference. And, um, I can tell you that for, for the business burglaries, we've had a lot of success. So that is down about 46% from last year. So that's significant. 46% fewer businesses are being burglarized. We've had 46% fewer, um, uh, incidents in this past year when you compared. Residential burglaries are down about 26% as well. So that area is going pretty well. What isn't is your petty theft. And a lot of people will go to not just Walmart, but other places, Walgreens, and, and I can go on and on and on, because they know that they can just snatch something, run out the door and there's not going to be any consequences. So that's why we were very proactive in going after this organized retail theft, uh, grant, which is going to dedicate 25 police officers on a task force, working alongside with the Fresno County District Attorney's Office and the Close Police Department. And, um, and probation, which is a force multiplier for us with a lot of these folks who are already in trouble and, and continue to commit crimes. So what we're doing is, is we are identifying those individuals who are in these rings. They're, they have a crew that'll go in there, it'll steal the merchandise. They have another crew that'll go online and sell, uh, these things online. And it's, it's organized crime is what it is. So we have the ability of identifying those folks through technology, through resources, through, uh, more police officers and, and actually filing some serious charges. With this grant money that's going to go to the District Attorney's Office, they have to prioritize, um, our cases. So, so we know that we're, that we've had some success, especially in violent crime and burglaries for both businesses and, uh, and homes, but we're not there yet. You know, we, we are not there to the point where we can stop that petty theft, petty vandalism, petty trespassing, because simply they're, they're low-level offenses that we don't get a whole lot of, uh, help from the state. But that doesn't mean that, that we don't focus on them. That just means that we have to be more creative and look for outside resources, um, such as, uh, these, this grant funding. Now, I'll just, I'll end with this. I want you to know about the added resources that through the help of the mayor and the city council, we've been able to do in the last two and a half years. And, uh, when I first got here, um, my allotted positions, and this was in, in early 2021, was 838, okay? But we had about 150 vacancies and we had 100 police officers who couldn't come to work because of COVID. So we were literally running the city with about 550, 600 cops, which is not nearly enough. Now, we have more police officers and not positions, bodies than we've ever had in the history of, of Fresno. And, uh, this year is going to be expanded to, um, 900, it's actually 901 with this grant. That makes it 926. And then some of our other, um, uh, resources that we actually did away with, we have plans on bringing that back. So I believe by the end of next year, we'll be somewhere around, um, close to 950. And that's, that's, that's a little bit more equitable to a city our size. More cops do make a difference. Proactive enforcement does make a difference. Some of the additions have been toll bike officers, uh, at the districts. So you are seeing more police officers on bikes, uh, especially in, in central and especially in Blackstone. We have certain locations where we deploy those. Uh, we're also going to, uh, double our metro bike team. So you're going to see a lot more bike officers, um, in the downtown area. But also those, those officers can be flexed to, to be seen at the fair, can be used for special events. Whenever we have a block party at some of the districts, we can utilize them there. Each police department is now operated like it's, I'm sorry, each policing district is now operated like its own police department. If you don't know this, it's my job to know, but the average police department in the United States of America is 35 police officers. Okay, we have, uh, close to 120 police officers at each of the five policing districts. And you know what else they have? They have an investigation team during the day. They have a tag team at night. They all have bike officers, they all have a criminal analyst. And all these things have been added on, uh, in, in the past year and a half. So, so that gives us the capability to be more responsive. For example, at today's meeting, we are writing down, we're taking meticulous notes on a lot of your issues and locations. So we can go back to the central police station, which is its own police department, and they can be proactive and address those very, those very needs that you guys have. So, um, but, but I, I can't tell you how important today's event is. Because without your input, sir, ma'am, without your input, and ma'am, without your input, we, we get to hear it from the public that we serve, exactly what you're experiencing, exactly what you're seeing, exactly what your needs are, and then we can respond to it. So I'm a, you know, a younger police chief comparatively speaking to others, uh, in, in the US, which means I'm, I'm very in tune with data, with tech. And, and I like to see the science behind the numbers. And we're tracking that better than ever, but, but your input is, is, I mean, I, it's valuable to us.
How many of you know where the Central Policing District is?
I do.
Okay, we moved it in the heart of Blackstone, right? It's at Manchester. So we have 100 and, I don't know, Jennifer, 120-ish, 110 officers that are working out of there. And when they come out of their police station, um, for their, each of their shifts, day shift, night shifts, midnight shifts, they have to drive on Blackstone. And so that has increased the number of officers that are, that are traveling around the Blackstone area. And they're going to stay here and it was intentional. It was, uh, something we, when I did when I was police chief, we wanted them to be in the heart of, of, of Blackstone, so they are. And they'll stay there.
Thank you. And I notice the time is running fast, so we need to keep the questions to 30 seconds. So, because we still have a lot to cover. Okay, yeah. You're next.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Vikram Bura. And first of all, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Police Chief, all the respected councilmen, city attorney, and our, like, you know, detectives, everybody, to have your precious time to coming here. Actually, we are a businessman in this, uh, Central Valley. Me and my brother, we are running multiple gas stations plus other businesses. So today we are here, like, you know, to request you guys if we can get some kind of a help. We have a gas station on Blackstone and Dakota, right across from Manchester Mall. It's a Shell gas station. We bought a property next to it, uh, which is kind of a triangle-looking building. And we wanted to do some kind of improvement over there so we can chase the homeless people away. So we are looking for your help on that matter. If you guys can help us expedite something, whether we can add more gas pumps over there or do something which will like, you know, benefit Shell for us and for city as well. And plus, we have another issue which is a huge issue going on. We bought a property on Shields and Marawa. It's a small banquet hall. So I think, I'm not sure which district it, Valander, I think, maybe District Four or Six? I'm not sure. But like it's at, uh, Marawa and Shields Avenue. And over there, like, you know, we tried to do all the remodeling and everything. Every time we do it, very next night, homeless and drug addicts, they come in, they destroy everything. We have to start from scrap again. So we did it multiple times and we are keep having that problem. So we really need you guys port on that one. So we can do something which will like, you know, generate more revenue to the city and plus we can save our investment. So that's all we wanted to say. But one thing we wanted to, like, you know, really appreciate it, since Mr. Jerry, like, you know, he became the mayor, the Fresno is growing a lot and you guys are doing a lot of great things, like building a homeless shelter, taking care of everything. We never seen this kind of mayor before, where we can go and like, you know, take our problems, they will listen. Before that, the mayor was here, but sorry to say they were not like, you know, that community friendly. We would hardly know who the mayor is and what they are doing. But now we are feeling very confident and Fresno is like, you know, really clean, which we wanted to appreciate you guys. You guys are doing a great work. Police chief is doing a great work. So really appreciate on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
How you guys doing today? First of all, I want to go ahead and thank the head of police, Chief Dyer, Mayor Dyer, and, uh, all the council members here today. If we can go ahead and give them a round of applause for appreciating all that they're doing. We are both executives at a dealership here, at two different dealerships here in Fresno, California. We want to also thank the facade, uh, for allowing us to renovate our businesses and allowing us to get a presentable look on Blackstone. We have dealt with a lot in the past, but now we honestly appreciate you guys a lot. You guys have done a lot. We've had a lot of catalytic converters in the past that have been stolen. But recently, with the security that you guys have been hiring, the police officers that you guys are going to be hiring, I see this number shrinking exponentially and we appreciate it a lot. Isaiah's had some vehicles stolen. Oh, facade, round two, he didn't hear it. So he wants the facade. Yeah, we were the, I was the first one, yes. All thanks to you guys, all that you guys do. So, um, yes, we've had some catalytic converters stolen in the past. It's costed thousands of dollars, but you guys do a great job. And we want to thank you guys, not just keep downing you guys on everything. We want to make sure that you guys are appreciated and you guys know that you're appreciated. We've also had... We've also had some vehicles stolen at our other location here.
Yeah, we just want to thank, I know you guys mentioned that you have twenty-five officers joining the force. I've had multiple vehicles stolen this year. I just want to express, the communication has been very clear. You guys are very helpful. So we don't want this to just be all negativity and darkness, right? A lot of negative things do happen. But we want to focus on the positive, because we both have seen a positive uptick as well, not just a negative downwards in the community. So we just want to honestly thank you. I want to second everything that he said. Like I said, from catalytic converters to vehicles being stolen, to things being broken into, I do believe that the Fresno community is doing a lot of work and bringing a little bit more brightness to the community as well.
Okay, we're just going to go ahead and conclude there. Thank you guys so much. We appreciate you guys. Thank you guys for all coming too as well.
Hey AJ, I just want to say that since we passed the new city ordinance that not only made it legal for anyone to possess a cutoff catalytic converter without a, you know, proper documentation, and also the, a little bit more accountability on the recyclers that aren't able to just take catalytic converters from just anyone. You know, that was Council President Maxwell and the mayor who both supported that municipal ordinance. So catalytic converter thefts have dropped about seventy-one percent. And it is amazing how quickly that happened. The precious metals, I think they went down in value a little bit. But I think the accountability and the outreach and the information that they would give to the public through a press conference really sent a strong message. And that's one of the beautiful things about Fresno, is that when we do take action, you can see the numbers be impacted citywide. So thanks to city leadership for initiating that.
Hey, how's it going? I just wanted to say that I appreciate a lot of what you guys have done since the last town hall meeting when we all came. And I've seen a lot of progress since then. I really appreciate what Richard Salinas has done for me over at Groshy Outlet. He's helped me in a lot of ways that I didn't know, didn't know what kind of resources I had. And he would come and check up on me and just say, hey, we need to do this. We need to do that. We needed, cutting the trees is something I wouldn't think of. Also, AJ, right, has done a lot. Thank you for putting this together and getting us all a voice, right? I appreciate that. And Louis, or Luis, the security guard, I don't know where he is, is here? He's been very responsive to anything I've ever needed. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, and I want to say, really, without the code enforcer and our own security on Blackstone, we couldn't have Blackstone as it is today. Would have been honestly like Parkway or G Street, you know? But it's the effort of the security, Richard Salinas, the code enforcer, and Blackstone Metropolitan Station. I need to give credit for myself, too.
Hi, my name is Pauline Dunn. I am with Shanghai Restaurant on Griffith and Blackstone. And I'm sorry for my appearance, but I just get out of the kitchen, change my shoe, and come here. I'm so sorry. First of all, I want to thanks Mr. Mayor. He is very concerned about our business. Secondly, I'd like to thanks to our police officers. Whoever I call, whenever I call, they show up. This is one-third of my police report. I know it's a very tough time for the city, for the mayor, for all the officers that are working hard out there with the homeless. But I'm requesting, number one is the code enforcement, the building code enforcement. My AC, it's called vandalism, but I know it's not vandalism. When they take something out of the AC unit and take it and sell it, that is not vandalism. I'm sorry to say that. I'm not attorney, but I can say to everybody that that is not vandalism. That is called thief. And then I think the insurance, they need to know that. My AC, six units up in the building, on top of the building, it's not been fixed since last year, July twenty, no, July eighteen. My business have dropped to one-third. When you have a business, you will not be able to pay rent. You will not be able to pay insurance. You'll not be able to pay the IRS, the state board. That is sad. That is my situation right now. It comes from where? From all the vandalism. Not vandalism, but theft. I have broken windows, doors, cutting the skylight. You know what the skylight, you know where they come from? The trees behind the building. On Gold Gym to Shanghai, there's a whole bunch of trees, big trees. And I even have the picture of the people who climb up in the tree, and then they put maybe either the pipe, the water pipe, and they climb up through the roof from there. So I like to have the code enforcement officers that go after the building, no, go after the landlord, give him the letters, and I have them fix. The parking lot lights, the parking lot lights been out for three years because they keep stealing the copper. Okay, so the camera, I have the camera all over the buildings, even the post office. The federal agent came and asked me, Pauline, I saw you have camera. Can I see your camera so we can track somebody down that they took something or they did something to the post office? It happens. So it doesn't really matter how many times I fix my camera. It's still, the stuff is still, they destroy it. So I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking that the code enforcement office put a very, just like, let the landlord to fix whatever they're supposed to fix. Okay, so that is my concern. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments. I am well aware of your situation. I'll talk to you afterwards. And by the way, I'm a big fan of your restaurant, too.
Pauline, I just want to say, I'm sorry for all that you've endured, you know? You lost her husband, right? Lost her husband, went through COVID, and all that did to restaurants and businesses in our community. Someone crashed into the front of your Shanghai, all the other things that occurred, the thefts from your AC units. And so I just want to say something to everybody in here. Please support Shanghai Restaurant. They've been in business now for what, over fifty years? Over fifty years in our city? They need our help. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Gutierrez, and I'm the owner of Mi Cafe Cito. We're inside Manchester Mall. And I'm opening my third location in Tower very soon. I just wanted to talk about the homeless problem that we have inside Manchester. You know, before I start, I just want to say the great work that AJ and Rick have been doing for Manchester. Since I moved in, we saw a big improvement. But lately, we have seen an increase of homeless in the area. As a family, fully-run and operated business, my kids are there when I'm not there. So I'm talking about my kids that are twenty, seventeen, sixteen, and it's super hard as a mom and as a business owner to leave them there, because, you know, something's going to happen. Either somebody that's going to go and take our tip jar, you know, someone that is going to go and take our Rice Krispies, you know? As much as we have security inside Manchester, you know, we're trying to figure out what's going to happen with all the homeless that are coming into the mall. There are new plans coming in for the mall as a whole. But is it something that we're going to be able to see an improvement on the homeless problem, like, a little bit more faster than what? Because it was improved. It was improved for a long time. But during summer, we got more and more and more. And it's very hard as a business owner to try to kind of, and as a family business, it's even harder to kind of cope with that. Even at Tower District, the same problem, you know? I had a budget to start it. And just like what happened with other businesses, I have homeless breaking in every time. So I'm out of my budget now, because a lot of the money that I had had to go to repair doors, screen doors, replace. A bunch of things that they took. And having the police be called many times, and they said, there's homeless. We can't do anything about it. You know, it's kind of bummer for us as a business, because we're a family business, local family. So we struggled with that. And then, you know, I understand the problem with the homeless. There's a lot of people that were at Manchester for many, many years, and they created no issues. But what is the city planning to do to kind of help support the small businesses to keep growing? Like, in my situation, I want to keep growing. I want cafecitos. I'm hoping to open two more cafecitos this year. And to be throughout the city. But if the city doesn't give us the support that we need, how we're gonna, you know, we see a lot of support for Starbucks and Dodge everywhere. But have you guys considered supporting the local small businesses from the valley to keep growing?
Plans?
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of resources that have recently rolled out. I know we've done a lot of meetings in Mi Cafe Cito, a lot of business meetings in there, which we appreciate having that option. I'll send out some new resources and stuff that may be a little bit responsive, and hopefully, we can kind of help keep that going. I know it's always great seeing your kids in there, too, especially when they come in for a cup of coffee. So I'll follow up with you after.
And I'll just touch, we did recently, this council approved a new business incentive program to incentivize new businesses opening up in the Tower District. So I'll connect with you after this, and I can give you that information. And it should be very helpful for opening up your new spot in Van Ness Village.
AJ?
I have also an update on that. And thank you very much, ma'am, for your support at Mi Cafe Cito. I know that you've supported us when we've had community events there at Manchester Mall. You know, the issue of homelessness and the unhoused is a complicated one. It's not an easy one to solve. And I know that we're all frustrated, you know, because we want to see improvements. We don't want to see people out there on the streets. We don't want to see, you know, blight and trash and things like that. You know, I am inspired and encouraged by the fact that we've made some progress, you know, for the city of Fresno to reduce homelessness by five point six percent, when other cities like San Diego went up eleven percent. That shows that there's some hope. And here's, you know, just this morning, I spoke to my brand-new sergeants about our core values. And one of those core values that we identified is compassion. And the fact that we have to deal with our homeless with compassion. I can tell you that the vast majority of them are suffering from some type of a mental health issue. They're suffering from addiction. Many of them don't want to be homeless. They don't want to be on the streets. So it is a complicated issue. I am grateful that the city has taken a leadership role in this issue, because primarily, it should not be a police issue. You know, primarily, so what does the police do when we encounter somebody who's, say, at a median under the tree? What do we do with them? Take them to jail because they're trying to get out of the sun? Are we to, you know, arrest them on sight for, you know, littering or whatever else? That's not always the answer. And every time that we do that, then our officers are focused on these types of crimes. They can't respond to shootings. They can't respond to homicides. So I know that, you know, it's very easy for some of our members of our community to just point fingers and say, well, you're not doing anything. Well, you're not doing anything. Well, we are doing a lot. But it is by working together with the community, with our business owners, to get together, to have town halls like this one, to share information. You know, every time we show up to these, I learn something, and I hope that you learn something as well, as far as what's available out there for your businesses, either through resources or what can the police do about it. But we are taking a much more compassionate and comprehensive approach to the unhoused, because we understand that taking them to jail primarily isn't going to solve the issue. Because they're not going to be held, and they're going to be right back where they were at before. So we have to think outside the box. And I love the fact that we're doing transitional housing, because it has gotten a lot of them off the streets, and it's a pathway towards, you know, being stable and getting a job. But, you know, we have to be realist, too, and understand, look, this is complicated. We're not going to solve this overnight. And most people just like to point the finger and have zero to no solutions. We have to keep working together. We have to be consistent. We have to do it with compassion. And we have to have opportunities and resources to help our unhoused community.
Thank you, Chief. And I want to make sure that folks knew what our resources are here. When the chief spoke about not utilizing the police on the front end, there are times when the police are involved with our heart team. They're part of that team, homeless assistance response team. But we also have twenty outreach workers from the Pabarello House that are ones that are on the front lines, interacting with a lot of the homeless. But I wanted to introduce some of them that are here today. So Steve Montez is here from our heart team. Steve, you would please stand right there, stay standing. And then we have Sergeant Hakes, who's our sergeant that's over involved. He's there in front. And then Sarah Marhadi, if you would stand, a part of our outreach team over at the PAV. And then Joe Pacias, our homeless services manager, is here as well. And so if any of you need assistance, these are the individuals that you can speak with in terms of business owners or anyone else that's seeking shelter. Thank you.
You know, I want to say that the mayor gave me direct connection to Phil Sky, the director of the heart team, Steve Montez, and Sarah Marhadi, too. And I call them, and within seconds, they get back to me, we need something to be done. We're working as a team and responding to what we request from them on Blackstone. So what I want to add, actually, we tell our merchants on Blackstone to not feed and do not give, do not feed the homeless. And the reason why is, if you feed them on your property, they're going to get more and more, it's going to destroy your business. So we tell them not to. But however, Richard and I, we get boxes of food every week from Pastor Raul Reyna. He's sick today, he couldn't make it. So we deliver food to them everywhere in the city twice a week. Every box will last them three days at least. And we give them water. We have the security guy that works for Blackstone does the same thing. Give them water and food, too. So they're human beings, they need to take care of. But at the same time, we need to take care of the businesses that they cannot ruin the business. One more thing first. We know, because we've done that so many times, when a shopping center or area has homeless people in it, the crime is high, breaking in that property is high. And really, one of the reasons they break in is because they want food and water, too. So that's why we give them food and water to prevent them from breaking in. But we know, once we clean the area, we clean that shopping center, crime goes down almost to zero. And within thirty days, businesses are telling us that the revenue is going up thirty to forty percent. So again, this is the heart of Fresno, the commercial area. So we need to make sure it's always clean, safe for the businesses. They're the ones that hire people. They're the ones that pay taxes for the city.
Thank you, AJ. And just one other thing, we didn't talk about a service that we provide. Some people don't like the service, but I think it's an essential and necessary, and it is our mobile showers. We have mobile showers in the city for the homeless, and we take those to various locations throughout our city. And we have set hours at a particular location, not to be, not to draw necessarily homeless people there, but the fact is, there are homeless people already there. And giving some dignity back to those folks, making sure they get a change of clothes, shower. And we also have a mobile medical clinic with UCSF that goes out there with those mobile showers from time to time as well. So that's something that we are doing, but we also recognize the impact it has on neighborhoods and businesses. And it's a difficult balance, and we're really trying to do both.
I'm not good at public speaking. But my name is June, and I'm not like a physical business, but a more of a mobile business. I work for the Lifeline Program, which is a state-funded program where we provide services for low-income individuals. I've been doing it for about nine years. So not only have I been able to make, you know, income for me and my family, but also provide a service for, you know, people that are on food stamps, Medi-Cal, even older people that are on social security. But unfortunately, we, I feel like we're not looked at as like a legitimate business, because they just see tents out on the street. I set up near Manchester Center. And we get harassed sometimes by, you know, Richard gets called all the time to get us to leave, because unfortunately, they feel because us being there and providing that service, that it attracts the people that steal inside Dollar Tree, that, you know, go into the Ross, or at least that's what they've told me, that because us being there, we get blamed for a lot of the stuff that happens there. So what can we do to kind of legitimize more of what we do? Like, hey, we're not just out here hanging out, and, you know, we're actually... hey, we're not just out here hanging out and, you know, we're actually like a legit business providing a service for these people that need to get, you know, a hold of their caseworkers. I mean, Pavarello shows up some, sometimes there too. So it's like, what can we do to help those people that need those services without, I guess, being looked at like a certain way?
Well, nobody's picking up their mic, so let me just say this. I, I was not aware of your location over there, so I haven't heard any of this. But you're, I'm going to step out on a limb a little bit, but you're more than welcome to partner with our folks when we go out with our mobile showers. If you're about, if it's about bringing services to the homeless population, more than happy to have our folks meet with you to talk about how we could better coordinate those service deliveries to the folks.
Yeah.
So I think that would be, you know, in lieu of somebody standing up and vouching for you, it's, I think we'd like to partner with you.
Yeah. Also too, like we've noticed that theft too has gone up with people stealing our phones. I've personally had been physically attacked and got my stuff taken. And we've called you guys before and sometimes they don't, because technically it's not like an emergency, nobody really comes and they just tell us to call non-emergency. So it's like, how can we get your support as well, literally being in the same vicinity? Because sometimes we don't even call because we're like, oh, nobody's going to come.
I, I will say, so you're the one distributing the phones, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we do get a lot of complaints from businesses
Yeah.
throughout the city because people set up on sidewalks, which is not lawful. Sometimes they set up in front of businesses. You, you can't block a sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
And so it, it, it does become a challenge for the city when they get called, code gets called, police get called. So I, I think we have to respect the businesses
Yeah.
in, in that and then, but then find a way to deliver the services. And maybe that's best doing it with some of our folks as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I'm trying to rush because it's 3:45. So I'd like to talk to Councilman Esparsa. We did talk about the P-Bid. I think really the solution for Blackstone, really a lot of merchants will tell you the security that we have made a difference. And the difference for Blackstone is having the P-Bid so we can have our own security plus other stuff grid association. So I've been doing that from 2016, from my own money, my own time, but we cannot continue like this. So we did talk about it. So if you can follow up on it.
It's what it is?
Yeah. P-Bid, did you get the money for the consulting to?
Yeah. So, so for those of you who don't know, P-Bid is a property based business improvement district. In layman's terms, essentially we would draw sort of a boundary around a certain area, a commercial area. And then the property owners in that area would pay fees into a pot and that pot is utilized. You're shaking your head, AJ.
I'm listening.
And then that, that pot of money is utilized to improve that commercial area. So in this case would be Blackstone. In the past, during COVID-19, I did secure some dollars to explore what a P-Bid might look like and help organize folks on Blackstone. It was, it was during COVID and so the vendor at that time had some trouble getting a hold of folks. I know in many cases, the property owner is not always the business owner. There's a separation there. And so the effort was abandoned at that time by our vendor in the city. I think we only expended a few thousand dollars. The contract never really was fulfilled. Since then we've been in a holding pattern. Now we're sort of in a post-COVID era where we think a P-Bid effort, taking another run at it might, might work well. And so we'll look at, you know, essentially revisiting, getting those dollars for a vendor to organize the corridor. And it really is up to the property owners. It's something that the property owners would have to all vote on, sort of opting into. And once you reach a certain threshold of votes, that P-Bid will be formed. But really, I mean, what's happening on Blackstone now with this organization of merchants that you all have, you've essentially sort of done it on your own. But what this would do would really be to formalize it in a way where you have more money and everyone is participating, not just a select few.
So to explain that, we have a lot of people in Blackstone that pay for security. And I think by having security, instead of paying $500 a month for security, we can cut it down to $500 a year almost. You know, because if everybody's paying, part of security is going to go down, then we're going to have a lot better service for everybody.
Yeah. So P-Bids can be utilized for a number of different functions, including a security among
Security.
chief among those purposes, as well as marketing and such, right? So it all goes back into paid for by the property owners. It all goes back into the corridor in order to improve the corridor and benefit to the property owners who paid into that fund in the first place. So it would be a way, I mean, it, it would essentially eliminate the program you have now and replace it and be funded this way, in this mechanism.
Yeah, thank you. You know, before we continue, and I'm trying to rush because I know it's taking too long. So on, on Glen Avenue behind the Clarion Point, I just want to show the pictures. And, and I did request that from Sarah, that, you know, this is on Glen. The lady from Glen couldn't make it today to talk about it. She lives in an apartment. Her kid's going to go out because of all, a lot of issues there. I don't know if the issue's still there, but my request from Clarion Point is we need to build a masonal wall around, around the Clarion Point. And that's going to prevent people from dealing through the fence and it's going to prevent people, you know, because when the first came in to Clarion Point, there was a lot of dealing happened through the fence. So by putting masonal wall is going to really solve this problem. So that's a request. I don't know who's going to pay for it, Pavarello House or the city, but that's something we really request to have. So next one is, we're still talking about some businesses. They're going to tell you their issues.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Gonzalez. I'm a sales associate at Javier's Home Appliance on Saginaw. This is the owner, Javier Herrera. We had some concerns that we were burglarized about six months ago. They broke in. We're right on Saginaw, Blackstone, across the street from the Jiffy Lube and the hotel, next to some apartments. So we were burglarized six months ago. We own, he owned an appliance store. They stole several tools. And it's a very, very sketchy area at night. So we wanted to see if we could get more patrol out there at night. Also, it's really dark. If you guys could see if there's any way we can get more lighting down Blackstone, make it a little bit more revitalized, being that we're across the street from the hotel. Also, we're doing sales. We are selling appliances. There's ambulance coming to the, to the store across the street. Next door, there's some apartments. We come to work. There's mattresses. There's refrigerators thrown next door to our, our business. It looks not nice. Like who wants to come shop here? You know, I think what we need is maybe getting a community that everybody can support, even if it's a volunteer, revitalize Blackstone. Let's get together as a community. I know you guys can do everything, but we need to make this place like, look like River Park. Nobody wants to shop down here. Businesses are hurting. Businesses are suffering. We're trying to stay afloat, but look at where we're at. Yes, we can't get the homeless out, but let's make the place look nice. Let's make it look better. I'll be the head of community. I don't care. Let's get it together. Let's all volunteer. I see my, my boss.
Thank you, thank you.
I see my boss working hard nine years just to keep his business prosperous. We don't want to close the doors, but when we get our tools stolen, it's expensive. Tools are expensive, especially appliance tools. Also, the apartments, like I said, there's a lot of, I know you said, Mayor, that that maybe the hotel is going to be home apartments. Being that it's hotel, there's a lot of fighting. People are fighting heads up in front of our business. Like it's crazy. Police are caught. I'm sure you guys know, I'm, you know, I'm not going to take too much time. Just, we just need to put more lighting down Blackstone. It's really dark and that's why we're here. And those are our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. AJ, could I just say a couple of words really quick? I appreciate you bringing that up. You know, the three of us here represent the majority of Blackstone Avenue and I think I'm pretty confident in saying we're all pretty dedicated to making sure it is a much more beautiful place. You know, we're doing a lot of cleanups with the mayor. We focused a lot around our main corridors, including Blackstone, working on not removing trees. You know, maybe we could trim some of our trees, but not removing, adding some more lighting. I'm confident that this new grant, having more police bodies up and down Blackstone, you're going to notice a huge difference. But I do want to just address the general audience real quick. We're getting close to four o'clock. I know a lot of us got to be out the door. We got some meetings back at City Hall. I want to reiterate something that I said in my opening statements. There are some things that the government could do really well. And I think those are the things that we need to highlight and continue to work on. We have a lot of great programs, whether that's through our police department, some of the grants that they're getting, whether that's through lands and economic development, your city council members. We have a lot of opportunities. That's not to say that we have all of the answers. And so I want to encourage folks, if you have any follow-up questions for me, again, my email is district4@fresno.gov. Unfortunately, I got to run out the door here in a few minutes with some of the others. But I know that this is an ongoing conversation. We had a meeting last year. We had one this year. We're not ever going to see all the problems or issues go away. But my hope is every year that we see improvement, whether that's beautification, the safety of your businesses or more opportunities for your businesses up and down Blackstone Avenue. So I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here today. I'm sorry, we weren't able to get through all of the questions, but I do appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Let me ask, how many of you have been a part of the Beautify Fresno? Because I need every hand here. So go to beautifyfresno.org. We have cleanups, sometimes as many as eight to 10 a month. Volunteers, we've had over 22,000 volunteers that come out on weekends and during the week. And we provide all of the paper pickers, the bags, and we pick up trash throughout the city. And the most beautiful thing is when you see folks come from a, a part of Fresno, into another part of Fresno they don't live in to clean it up. And we've had significant numbers. In fact, Manchester has been the central location for many of our, our cleanup efforts where we'll have 100 people come out and pick up trash all along Blackstone and, and Shields and Dakota. So please, beautifyfresno.org. Please get involved in that. It is a incredible movement and I think you'll, you'll, you'll start to see the noticeable difference. The other thing is that we are doing transition from our normal street lights to LED. That will help a lot with our lighting on Blackstone and number of other, other streets. That's a slow conversion process. And then starting in January, we're having what's called quadrant cleanups. So in District Seven, Nelson Esparsa created a program that was specific to his district where folks would go out every day of the week for our city employees. They would look for large items like refrigerators, stoves, large piles of trash, whatever the case is, and they would make sure that those picked up proactively. We are now doing that on a citywide basis for teams divided into quadrants in our city that we're going to be working on. We also have some special cleanup crews that are occurring in the Tower District as well as downtown. That includes pressure washing sidewalks. So a lot of beautification efforts in our city and I did not want to, to lose sight of that.
Thank you for the opportunity. I know you guys have a meeting, so I'll be very quick. I own White Pine Lumber, which is between Ashland and Gettysburg. One of the problems I run into is I go back a full city block. And so I have vandalism coming in from the homeless also off Effie. But my main concern is with the vandalism is my sons who are fourth generation want to beautify the building, want to update the building to bring in a higher, you know, more clientele. And every time we come up with a design, the first thing we hear is, well, they're going to, you know, destroy it. It's going to get destroyed. We have vandalism and not so much burglary because we fortified the front of our store. We don't want it to look like a liquor store that's closed at night with the chains. But we're trying to make it more beautiful on Blackstone. But the vandalism and the, you know, they, they come in and they break stuff up. They cut my gates and they steal building materials. So I, just something that, you know, if you guys can be aware that, you know, I mean, I go back a block. So I've got a lot of vandalism coming in off the back also. And we get homeless encampments. But whenever we have had any kind of response, you guys have showed up. You beat me to the store when I get a call. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. And what's your address?
4392 North Blackstone.
Got it. Thank you.
So, so I know you all have to leave, but I need 10 minutes. Please, we'll give you 10 minutes. I'm going to just rush through all this. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank District One for coming through with a, a real flyer for us. We're a nonprofit. We run transitional living homes. We house the people that you guys were talking about. People that are living in the motels on Blackstone, transitioning from rehab to the streets, back to, back to our place. And District One came through with a huge thing, helping us pay one of our bills and just keep us afloat. So that's the sole reason that we grabbing the mic. So gracias.
Just two minutes because they need to talk to you, that Takira's.
I talked to them offline.
Okay. Okay. How about if I set the meeting, meet with you directly? We'll do that. Okay. We're going to meet, Takira's going to meet with her directly. You know, we'll do that directly. And I want to thank you for everything you did for them, by the way. But we met with her directly. I called, set an appointment. Sorry about that. I know it took too long. Sorry about this, but this is.
All right. Hi, I'm Martha Velazquez, owner of Arts Auto Body and Paint on Blackstone McKinley. I've been in business since 1987. It's a family run business. All my, my sons work for me. My son-in-law works for me. My nephew works for me. My brother-in-law works for me. And you guys are shutting me down for this project. You guys are doing this thing. It's affecting my whole entire family.
Hold that mic up so I can hear.
Yeah, you're, it's affecting my whole entire family.
Who shut you down? How?
Blackstone McKinley, Arts Auto Body and Paint. And we're right, right, as soon as you get out of college, you see, you see Arts Auto Body and Paint right there. So.
When you say you got shut down by who?
Well, they're going to shut us down because they're not going to let us work there anymore.
Why?
Because, wow, I mean, because you guys are intimate domain.
Because of what?
Intimate domain.
Intimate domain.
Oh, you're talking about the Great Separation?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. I'm sorry.
I'm on a different.
I'm sorry. Gotcha. I understand now. I, and your businesses, what's the address?
1560 North Blackstone and 1540 North Blackstone. And I have somebody here that wants to speak also for us. You know, I got a lot of friends that came from all over, all over. They came from family and friends and customers.
So, okay, so you're talking about the Great Separation. And for those of you don't know, there, the, the trains that go through Blackstone and McKinley shut down traffic 31 times a day, eastbound traffic on McKinley and westbound, and 31 times a day, the ones that go northbound and southbound on Blackstone. It, in, we have, Blackstone is a transit-oriented development corridor, meaning that it is supposed to be for bus rapid, I'll use that word again, rapid transit. What ends up happening with our emergency vehicles, police, fire and buses, they end up stopping at that location. The average train is three minutes, average train. So when you think about how much traffic is being stopped and we're trying to rebuild Blackstone, revitalize Blackstone, we're trying to build housing on Blackstone. One of the things we have to have is an ability to have a smooth flow of traffic, north and south and east and west, plus the fact we've had some city college students hit by trains. So we've have solicited funds and we've been working on this now for about 10 years. A Great Separation, which will take McKinley underneath the railroad track. So there'll be no stopping and Blackstone and, or Blackstone underneath the railroad tracks. So there'll be no stopping for a train ever again. Fortunately, it impacts some businesses. Those businesses will be, there's a, well, I can talk to you offline how that works. I'm sure you've been in touch with our folks on what that means financially, the assistance to your business in, in terms of relocation, purchasing it and so forth.
Jerry?
Because it impacts about five businesses there.
I looked, when they gave me the offer, I looked around. I can't even buy a piece of dirt for the offer they're giving me.
So we need to talk offline. I'm not going to negotiate publicly.
Yeah.
It's not who I, it's not what I do.
So I want to say, I did talk to a lot of people where the grades can happen and that.
First I've heard about that, by the way. So nobody's contacted my office. This is the first time I've heard about it from AJ. But I'd love to have our folks sit down and talk to you from Public Works because the first thing, last thing we want to do is impact business in a negative way. And we want to be fair. We really do. We value your business in Fresno.
So I'm going to set the meeting and with all of them, I'm meeting your office.
Scott Mojer.
Okay. I will do that.
Well.
AJ, I won't involve the mayor's office first off. It, it has to involve Public Works and the process we have with the attorneys.
But, but I want you to hear the issue, then we set it up with whoever.
I can't because it's a legal issue and the city attorney has to be involved. I can't because it's a legal issue, and the city attorney has to be involved with that with Public Works.
Okay.
The mayor can't get involved now.
So would you, it made me who I should talk to, then I set it up?
You can, you can contact our office, we'll make sure it gets set up to have the right people there.
Okay, okay.
My name is Tim Collier. I'm an ex-professional athlete.
Were you a defensive back for the 49ers?
Yes, I was.
Are you pretty good, Tim? But you're not a, you're not a very good golfer. I know that.
It has improved. I want to speak briefly about Art's business. I've made Fresno my home for the last 24 years. During that time, I've done business with Art, and the reason why his business thrives is because he treats people fairly and honestly. And as I walked to this meeting today, it was appropriate that we had it in a church because God demands us to deal with people honestly and fairly. That's all we ask. And Mayor, I appreciate what you've done. I'm proud to say that I'm, that Fresno is my home. I've had teammates to come down. Ronnie Lott is, last week, had dinner with me. He said, I never knew Fresno was like this, and I will be back. So you've done a great job.
Thank you.
All I ask is that you look into the imminent domain process.
Yep.
And give it a second thought.
Got you.
Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
So let me explain. Thank you, Tim. I did talk to all the businesses in the area, and basically, the offers that they got are .
Put your cell phone.
559-313-7817.
313, what's your last?
7817.
Okay, I didn't know your business was being backed.
So I told them that you need to listen, and I know things would happen when you listen to them. So let me tell you the problems everybody is. Basically, they got offers for 50% of the value of the property. And like Art, he said, look, my property is paid in full, I'm going to go somewhere else at this age, I'm supposed to retire now, I need to start from beginning. So they need to get paid the fair price, they cannot be worse off than what they are today. A lot of businesses are the same way.
Yeah, we can't do it in public, though.
Yeah, yeah, but let me, let me say what I want in public, let me say what I want in public. So basically, it's what I heard from them, a lot of businesses, they cannot go find an equal location to what they have today. So that's a suggestion we have, and we can meet with you on that. If we can extend the expiration date of the conditional use permit that happened because of COVID, because it takes four years to recover from COVID, and if we can talk about development standard to give chance for them to find an equal location on Blackstone. So is that something we can set time to meet together on that one? And the last one I want to talk about, I know we talked too long, is the facade. So I'm going to talk on behalf of everybody. A lot of people in the facade, which I did talk to Lance about it, they got approved, but they, they were told there was no funding. Oh, we don't have the money, but you approved. How can you be approved if you don't have the money? So a lot of people in Blackstone have the same issue, and I'm always back with, talking to Lance about it.
Yeah, AJ, give him my cellphone number, and I'll handle him one-on-one. We'll work with it that way to get him across.
We did $1.5 million in facade improvement citywide, $25,000 per business, those who qualified, there were a lot of people who qualified, but $1.5 million that we, we channeled through the Fresno Hispanic Foundation to administer it for us. They've done a great job, you've heard some of the folks that are here today. And then on top of that, I believe there's a million dollars that is available now for District One and Four, and so businesses that are within those districts can also apply, and that application process is open now.
So I want to say thank you, sir, for taking too much time, and thank you everybody for attending.